Are we on? Do we have the little tape thing?
She has the tape.
That's one of the fanciest water bottles. It's like styling, styling.
Actually, it looks more like a martini jug.
It looks kind of like a fence.
We're on, we're live guys.
It's a thizzle.
We're going to open the meeting of the planning board on July 11th, 2014.
July 14th.
July 14th? Oh, it says 11th. Okay. That's 14th, okay. July 14th, 2014. President Anat Loel, John McLaughlin, Joe Marklinger, Carl Borchardt, and Diane Coombs, and myself, Linda Williams. Barry is coming, as far as we know.
He's sent his way.
Okay. We're going to call to order. We do have an audio tape running and a videotape. If anybody else would like to tape the meeting, please let us know that. Otherwise, we have called to order. Does somebody want to, any changes to the agenda? Catherine, anything? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion.
Anat's made a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm booing him, I am.
I just want to point out that Nantucket, the Island Racquet Club amendment, that was withdrawn. I'm not sure if your, the agenda that you referenced notes that or not.
Yeah, I knew that. Okay. Island Racquet Club, which is 1614, has been withdrawn. Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Can alternates vote on this also?
I think there's enough of you to...
There's three of us?
Yeah.
Okay. That was unanimous. Catherine?
Yeah.
Okay. The minutes, I have not had a chance to read them. Has anybody else read them and have any changes to them? Anybody else read them?
I've read them. I seem to find there's no change.
Okay. Hold on one second. I wanted to ask Leslie. Leslie, had you looked at the minutes also?
I have not looked at the minutes.
I think we should hold them, because Leslie hasn't reviewed them yet. John? Somebody want to make a motion to put the minutes over to the August meeting?
I can make that motion.
Anat's made a motion to put the minutes over for the August meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was unanimous. Catherine?
Yep.
Public hearings, Ken and Diane Ottz. This is being continued to August 11th meeting. Brian Ryder is being continued to 10:13. John, you're buzzing. John?
I'm trying to get it shut up.
Michelle Whalen, Lyman Blake Jr. Are we going forward with that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that would be the next one up, right? Ed? John?
Let's come down to the microphone, Ed. Sorry.
Turn it, turn it over. Turn that over. It should do it.
It'll work?
Yes.
Edwin Lemberg for myself and Michelle Whalen.
Turn that over, Catherine. He's like in the corner over there. Just pick it up and move it. John?
Should we go over here, Ben?
Yes.
Does, I, should I reiterate what the situation is, what the problem is?
We have a technical problem up here, John. It's still going.
All right. I'm going to try to straighten it out. Don't tell me.
It's okay.
I can't stand it. I have the opposite problem. Okay. Representing the applicant is?
Edwin Lemberg.
Okay. Put it right up there.
Okay.
All righty. Go for it.
Okay. Well, technically, it's Lemberg's son and daughter and Michelle Whalen. It's a condominium at 13A and B, Marianne Drive. And the zoning officer cited it as being in violation of the zoning bylaw with respect to parking about a year ago, I believe. So, the town meeting offered to remediate it to our particular situation, as well as other people on the street and other streets. And we've opted to go with option number two, which allows four cars, which we need for the two bedrooms each unit. And at the moment, we've had a plan drawn by a professional land surveyor. But the, one of the, the people, not myself, the other people, haven't really totally complied with the plan. They've got some trees that need to be moved. They're afraid the trees might die because it's summertime. So, my point is, is that we've agreed to use option number two, which will comply with zoning, but the actual literal implementation won't happen until maybe September. Am I clear on this?
You're fine. I'm having trouble paying attention, because he's got something going on over here.
Can I ask a suggestion on this? Just hold on one second. Andrew, can you give us, can you explain, kind of bring everyone up to speed on the solution, the options that were?
We have nothing in our package.
Because this is the old, you know, issue on Marianne Drive.
Right.
When he says on the streets, he means the streets in the area.
Right. The issue is, is that a special permit won't be needed if, they'll basically be able to do it by right. But because it's, they're not ready to implement, we don't want them to face fines or anything.
Right.
So, what we would suggest is you continue it to your 10:12 meeting, which is when we're going to hear some of the other ones, including Brian Ryder.
That way, he can't fine him or anything, right?
Right. And that should give time to implement it. And then, at that point, you can simply not move forward with a special permit, because he will have constructed a conforming parking spot.
Right. Okay. Because this, this, I get what you're saying. I just want everyone to know what we're talking about, because it's been a while since we've had this discussion.
We don't need to go over it again.
Maybe I should have had a plan up on the screen or whatever.
No, don't worry about it.
I'm not quite sure. But, you know, initially, it was, I guess, kind of, didn't look proper, because it was just all cars. And now, with this option two, there's a planting in the middle, plantings on the side, which sort of makes it more appealing and meets the new bylaw.
You're okay if we continue this to October, right?
Yeah, it is.
You won't be fined or anything else, right?
No.
Then we can figure out a way of dealing with it.
I did want to say, though, that Leslie Woodson did an excellent job in sort of guiding us on the right way to do it. And I just want to say she did a great job helping us.
We'll need an extension in the office.
I'm sure it's to the 13th, just February 13th.
Hold on. I had 12 written down, 13th. Okay. And John, do you have any more comments? He's going to continue it. John?
No.
Can I make a motion to continue to the 13th of October?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
John?
13th of what?
October.
13th of October, sir.
Thank you.
That was unanimous, Catherine. Barry is now back in his chair.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I do appreciate it. Next thing before us at this point is 1014, which is Nantucket Theater Institute and 5 North Water Street. For the applicant, I notice we don't have any additional information.
They're still trying to get through the HDC, to say the now.
Did we hear anything further, Andrew, Leslie?
I recommend that we continue the question.
I think that, and they'll grant us an extension, I trust?
I believe so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. You want me to go to October on this? It's going to take at least August to get this worked out at the HDC.
Let's, we can revisit it then.
Okay. I'll make a motion. What's the August meeting?
11th.
I'll make a motion to continue to August 11th.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. Next thing before us is 15-14, which is Nantucket Commons Condominium. This is an amendment, and they're at 7C Bayberry Court. For the applicant, good evening.
Hello. Patricia Halsted for the applicant. We're basically to get permission to change the existing use from office space to residential.
Hold on. Hold on. We have...
Sorry about that. Please.
That's okay.
Continue.
To change the use currently from office to residential. This unit is a second-floor unit. It has a couple of different steps, levels to get up to, and really doesn't blend as well, maybe as user-friendly, as a apartment would be, a residential unit. And since there's always a need of housing, I think it might be more appropriate.
Okay. Board members, any discussion? Anything from staff? Want to contribute now? Members of the audience, the public hearing's now open at this point, so if anyone would like to comment on this. Seeing no one?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Hold on. Special permit on this? I'm sorry, guys.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, Mr. Marklins?
Sure.
Thank you. All right.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
And it was seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to grant the special permit.
And thank you.
Sign in office.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Island Racquet Club, that's been withdrawn at this point. That brings us to 7640, which is Fisher Lane Subdivision, 101 Low Beach Road. For the applicant, Mr. Malloy. Good evening.
Good evening. If you recall, the only issue remaining on this project was the question of the roadway itself, the traveled surface being within an easement versus totally within a right-of-way. We've provided you tonight a revised plan, which now places a variable width right-of-way around the traveled way. So, the entire traveled way is now within a right-of-way. There's no longer an easement required to contain it. That was the only issue remaining. All the other permits, all the other questions with this board, I believe, are in place. Everything's taken care of. It's just a question of revised layout, if that's satisfactory at this point.
Okay. Board members, any discussion? Anything from staff? Public hearings now open at the stage. Mr. Reed, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I received the material from Dan Malloy last week, indicating the changes to the plan. And obviously, that gets us out of the situation of having to worry about the question of whether you can appropriately have a roadway layout that is separate from the actual road that would be constructed. We do have a couple of comments. As you know, I represent the Nantucket Conservation Foundation and the Wisconsin Trust. We do have a couple of comments and possible conditions. We would like to ask that there be a provision that there will be no further subdivision from this road that's narrower than the layout that's provided, that's required by the regulations. And also, we would ask you to consider the possibility of a restriction against secondary dwellings under those circumstances. In addition to that, we would like to have, and I believe the applicant would be agreeable to this, a provision that there would be fencing of some sort to prevent continued encroachment upon adjacent conservation land, that is, the Conservation Foundation and the Wisconsin Trust lands, which abut the property on two sides. There's been some past intrusion on the Conservation Foundation property that we've asked the applicant to remove. I believe Mr. Malloy will advise his client that they should do so. But in any event, I think it would be prudent for there to be some fencing along the boundary line in order to prevent further encroachments and damage to the vegetation on the conservation land. Subject to that, as I say, we no longer have any opposition to the allowance of the plan as a two-lot plan. Thank you.
Ms. Malloy?
Real quick, in terms of the comments, Mr. Reed, we just talked briefly about it prior to the hearing. We're okay with no further subdivision. It's a large 12-acre piece. It's roughly going to be two lots, one, say, six and a half acres, one, five and a half acres. They're not looking to do further subdivisions, so if that's the will of the board, that's no problem with us. We're not going to argue on it. No second dwelling. We would have a problem with that, given the size of the property. We don't see an issue having a second dwelling out there on the property. The fence, we have talked about that. I've talked to the property owner. We fully intend to do a fence across either the boundary, the rear boundary that abuts the conservation land, or whatever we expect to be the limit of our conservation, our endangered species disturbance area, whether it's something that comes from this board, or we make it part of private negotiations with the abutters, or maybe part of our natural heritage permit. But there will be some type of fencing and designation put up.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm glad to see that the no further subdivision, and I don't really want to tie the fencing into this, personally, into this decision, because it may move, depending on where MIPA draws that line.
Correct.
But I think when you deal with MIPA, you'll have to put a split rail fence up of some sort somewhere. It isn't going to be wire.
They always require some type of physical designation on the ground.
I'm not in favor of restricting you against a secondary dwelling, given the sizes of these lots. I don't see the point in restricting a secondary dwelling. You meet the septic and you meet the size. So, I'm okay with the condition of further subdivision. That's about as far as I'm going to go.
Board members, anything else? Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Does it require a special permit again?
Yeah. Subdivision.
Pardon, subdivision. Thank you. I'm sorry. It's been a long, crazy minute. Motion was made to close the public hearing. That's now seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to endorse the subdivision with the condition no further subdivision.
Okay. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next thing before us is 7699, which is Weatherly Place, 47A and B Fairgrounds Road. For the applicant.
For the applicant, Kara Bosnowski, Marianne Hanley. Mrs. Bosnowski is here, along with her husband Jerry, who's also our engineer, which helps things out immensely.
There you go.
This is a subdivision of two lots into four lots, four building lots and a roadway lot on 47A and D Fairgrounds Road. It's the property right next to the yoga room, just to familiarize yourselves with it. There are a few waivers that we've asked for. Basically, we're trying to keep the subdivision in context with the existing residential neighborhood around it. The roadway will be 18 feet wide, paved with a 30-foot layout. There'll be Cape Cod, excuse me. Open Gate berm around the roadway. We are actually eliminating one curb cut onto Fairgrounds Road as a result of this subdivision. Everybody will come out the subdivision roadway. There are already, one, two, three houses located on the two lots, and there's a concrete slab on one of the lots that hasn't been developed yet.
Ms. Parker Gray's is the other half of it. So, it's Parker Gray's and Tommy's lot on the other side. It's going down right in the middle of them.
Park is 47A.
Yep. And how wide is the road layout?
The layout will be 30 feet with a turning tee at the end. It's about 223 feet long, and the paving will be 18 feet wide.
I don't know if 18 feet is excessive, because I know the property really well. And 18 feet is wider than some of these roads that we're using to get to other places. We've gone 14 with a two-foot on each side. We've gone 16 with a two-foot on each side. But paving 18 feet wide, that's as wide as Fairgrounds Road is paved. And that's a lot more heavy than you really need to go. Is that me, or?
Mr. Chairman, we've used 16 feet. I mean, it is serving a small number of houses, so having a shoulder would be beneficial for off-street parking. So, I think the 30 feet should remain, but I think 16 feet would be reasonable.
Washington Pond Road, 16.
Yeah. 18 feet is huge.
My clients don't have any objection to less paving.
Okay. Good. Any else from the board, from staff?
No question.
Yes, sir.
On 47A, it's very hard to read the small plans. What is that little, is there a building on 47A?
No, it's a concrete pad.
It's a concrete pad, but...
They never built the house, John.
Couldn't read it. Thank you.
He threw it back there a long time ago.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else, board members, staff? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to comment on this.
Just have one question for staff.
Pardon?
Have one question for staff.
Yeah, please.
Are we saying, Andrew, 16 feet plus two feet on each side? That's 20 feet. Are we saying...
No, no. Just a shoulder. So, it could be grass, cleared.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't have to be, it's just clear.
Yes.
It's already clear. Nothing there. Grass, yard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, it's just 16 feet paved. And I wasn't even, didn't even have to pave it personally, but that's just me.
Okay. Pleasure of the board. Was there anything else? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just one item.
Sorry.
The applicant is seeking a waiver for sidewalks and bike paths. The board typically requires some type of contribution towards that. Since there are two existing lots, I think, you know, for the two new lots would be reasonable.
Okay.
The board wants to entertain that.
Well, how much do you suggest, since they have a bike path across the street?
Go ahead, Leslie.
The board typically requests $2,000 per new dwelling unit.
Okay.
So, what is that?
$4,000.
$4,000?
$8,000.
$8,000?
I'm sorry.
$2,000 per dwelling unit.
There's already three dwelling units, there's one on each lot.
Right.
So, it'd be $2,000 just for the one new dwelling unit?
I was counting $2,000 per dwelling unit for each new lot, but it doesn't necessarily have to be calculated that way.
Well, that's only two new lots, because Tommy's lot is one, Parker Gray's one is the other one, so they're creating two new lots at the back. They're separating Tommy's two houses.
Of the four lots, three of them will already have houses on them.
Right.
So...
Is that typical, where it's only the new houses?
I think the board's done it different ways.
It's typically the net dwelling units that would be possible. So, there's one additional lot that's being, well, technically...
One new house is going back there.
Right. But remember, the bylaw allows two dwelling units.
For two dwelling units. That's, that's...
One, one, well, I was going to get that.
Right.
Well, you've got a ground cover issue here and a ground cover issue here.
It's our 10 over there.
It's our 10.
Yeah, it's 25% ground cover.
I just talked to the Bosnowskis. I mean, we'd prefer 2,000, but 4,000's fine. One per the two new lots.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But there's two dwellings that go on each of the new lots.
But they may not. And they're on sewer, and they got a bike path across the street.
All right. But let's deal with tangibles. Let's sort of deal with the whatevs.
Let me try a motion. Are we having to close the public hearing?
No, we really haven't at this point, because we need to, we need to kind of reconcile this. Yes.
Is it going to give you peer review?
Yes. Ed Pesci is looking at the proposal, and he had a preliminary discussion with me about it, and said there were just some minor things that they could work out. And a typical condition in the decision is that the board approves it, subject to a final review by Ed Pesci, which then the board endorses the final plans.
Okay.
So, we have...
No, we can do it through staff.
So, we have, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Based on my conversation with Ed Pesci, I don't think there's any reason to continue it based on his review. And he has experience working with the project engineers, and he feels confident that they can work out any minor issues.
All right. So, let's close up this thing on the bike path thing at the moment. So, you've got...
$4,000.
Two new lots with potential for two dwellings on each lot? Is that what I'm hearing from staff? Is that correct?
I think what we're talking about is there's one vacant lot...
Staff, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The one vacant lot that would allow two dwelling units, and that's what we're basing it on.
Okay. Thank you. That's, there you go. That's, because they're the ones who have to really make sure that that's adhered to as well. So, all right. Thank you. Was there anything else on the application? All right. So, not hearing anything?
Did you ask the public?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah. I can check again.
Second.
Now, anyone else in the public want to comment on this? Your order, you're in order, Mr. McLaughlin.
Second.
So, the motion's now made and seconded to close the public hearing. Discussion. This is not a special permit, correct?
No.
No, just a regular subdivision. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to endorse the subdivision with a 16-foot-wide, how do you want me to phrase it?
Traveled way.
16-foot-wide?
Traveled way.[1540.12]
With two-foot shoulders.
Two-foot shoulders, grass shoulders. Subject to the final review of Ed Pesci and a $4,000 bike path contribution?
Yep. Okay. That motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Eyes have unanimously.
And signed in the office.
Of course. All right, next thing is a modification, which is seven-seven-zero-zero, Kelly Road subdivision. This is twenty-eight thirty, Kelly Road, for the applicant.
Thank you. For the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors. Also in attendance tonight is Alan and Patricia Myers. Seated behind me, the owners and applicant of the subject property. In 2008, the Myers subdivided their existing parcel of land, which at that time had existing structures, a primary and a secondary dwelling, on the existing structure. We created essentially a three-lot subdivision at that time, which was an extension of Kelly Road and the two lots which would house the existing structures. At that time, there was no infrastructure proposed, as essentially we were using the existing driveways to the existing lots, and Kelly, and Kelly Road was essentially extended for the purposes of gaining frontage for the new lots. At that time, the intent was to remove a portion of an existing shed, which had a porch or addition off the front of it, if you will, and some decking. And the intent was to remove that. We're before you tonight with the intent now to hopefully leave that in place and then simply adjust the right-of-way line to accommodate the front yard setback in the lug-one zoning district. So essentially, what we're doing is altering the road layout, which was a third lot in the subdivision plan, and then thereby not having to alter the structure. That is the modification. Be happy to answer any questions, and there is a plan submitted with a file which depicts both the original Kelly Road layout and also the proposed layout.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Comments from staff?
Mr. Chairman, just one comment. The greenhouse, which violates the side yard setback, which I believe the Myers are going to remove or partially remove, can you just note that on the final plan?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Which one is the greenhouse? Oh, that's coming out.
Well, a piece, a piece of it's coming out.
Okay. So just a portion of it, Leslie, not the whole thing? Right?
Okay.
Just the piece that's in violation?
Just the piece that's in the setback, yes.
Got it. Any else from the board or staff? This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to comment on this?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, pleasure of the board.
I'll make a motion to endorse, and you want as a condition that the portion that's in the northerly setback be removed of the greenhouse?
I don't think it needs to be a condition. I just wanted to point it out on the record.
Got it.
Okay, so just a motion to endorse.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. A and Rs at this point, seven-seven-zero-two is withdrawn, Leslie, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you have ten A and Rs before you at this point. Is there anything you wish to isolate out or discuss individually? If not...
I'll make a motion to endorse seven-seven-zero-one, Damon Stone, seven-seven-zero-three, Langdon, seven-seven-zero-four, Giffen, seven-seven-zero-five, Cobos, seven-seven-zero-six, Hunter, seven-seven-zero-seven, Sanford, seven-seven-zero-eight, Henderson, seven-seven-zero-nine, Metz, seven-seven-one-zero, Town of Nantucket, Dartmouth, seven-seven-eleven, Town of Nantucket, Hummock Pond Road.
And do I hear a second? Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. You have four second dwelling applications before you at this point.
Let me get, we got to get to them.
Yes, okay, take your time.
It's going to take a half an hour to get to them. Any idea how far back in here we have to go? Here we go.
About that much.
What's the first one?
Twelve.
South Valley?
Yeah.
Jeff Spelker?
Yep.
Got it. Okay.
So do you want to review these individually? Do we want to take them as a group effort? Is there something you want to isolate out?
I think there's one question.
I have a couple of questions.
Aye, on each separate application?
Yes.
All right, so let's just take them one at a time. So first is twelve South Valley Road, Tim and Lori Minor. Go ahead.
I have a South Valley Road, which is attached to Hedgesbury Lane. So I don't know what I'm doing. My cover sheet is South Valley Road, and yet I have twenty Matticat Road. I don't know where the rest of South Valley Road is. Because all I seem to have lately is Hedgesbury. I'm just looking at the conditions.
Mr. Chairman, all the conditions are standard for secondary dwellings in this area with roadway grading?
Dirt roads.
Vegetation cutting, that type of thing.
That's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
On that one.
All right, so why don't we close that up, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the secondary dwelling per staff comments on twelve South Valley Road.
All right, and a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, twenty Matticat Road, Willian Mont, Chelsea.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be known new improvement on Matticat Road? Do we care about that?
That's a condition in the...
Condition of the subdivision.
Yes.
Did you have anything on that as well?
No. No. They're not allowed to on the subdivision.
All right. So...
I'll make a motion to approve twenty Matticat Road.
Oh, hold on.
Hold on.
Yes, sir.
I had a question for the staff. I was over here the other day going out to Matticat Road. And in the past, when we subdivided anything off of Hedgesbury Lane, I thought that the hedges are supposed to be completely closed out. There's gates there. Staff look into that, find out what's going on?
The pedestrian gates.
No, I did mention the fact that, I think I know where you're talking about, John, because it looks like they paved driveway apron, and it's, there was a temporary construction access there. And I did bring that to the DPW's attention, and that is going to be taken care of.
Yeah, I saw that, but there's three gates there today.
Oh.
Three different hedges. Low gates and four-four gate.
Pedestrian?
I had experience if it was, if it was approved. I don't recall it.
Oh, pedestrian gates, okay.
That's not an access.
I'll bring you photos.
Don't do that.
So is that tie things up, or does that pretty much result in that?
I already made the motion.
All right, so a motion is made, and do I hear a second, then?
Not second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, thirty-three Somerset Lane, John and Jesse Fresser.
Hold on.
Does anyone have any comments on this?
Don't. Motion to approve.
All right, and do I hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, thirty-three and a half, Quartland Road, Kevin Griswold.
Hold on one second.
Yep, take your time.
Mr. Chairman, on this application, there's just one thing that should be noted in the approval.
Yep.
Somewhere, there's a math error, and the primary dwelling and the secondary dwelling do not have the 20% differential...
Okay.
That's required. So they'll need to correct that, but I don't think it really impacts your review. The parking is the same, the driveway's the same, so as long as they make that adjustment.
Yeah, they told me when I asked that at the HDC meeting, that they did meet it, and I said, "You guys got to check it." I told them, I said, "You're maybe a couple hundred feet wrong direction."
All right. So is there anything floating about this? So pleasure of the board would be to...
I'll make a motion to approve.
And do I hear a second? Discussion.
These are all per staff comments?
Yes, absolutely. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Next thing is for a Form J lot release on seventy-three forty-two Pilgrim Court.
Mr. Chairman, the staff report actually recommends that you not grant the Form J, but Mr. Glynn reminded me that he submitted a performance security check last week.
Okay.
And so I do recommend approving the Form J, and he has agreed to bring in a deposit for the engineering escrow account tomorrow morning, so we can just hold that in the office until that account's brought up.
And we know where to find him.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Pilgrim Court, the, the release of lot thirteen.
Okay.
Second.
And hold in the office until the accounts are brought current.
Yep. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, six-nine-six-zero, Finnbeck subdivision. This is a Form J again for lots three, four, and five.
We recommend endorsement. There will still be two lots subject to the covenant.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to release lots three, four, and five from the covenant on Finnbeck.
Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously. Brings us to preliminary plan, seven-seven-one-two, Matthew and Sheila Fee, Something Incorporated, fifteen fifty-two Cliff Road, for the applicant.
Jeff Blackwell for the applicant. The plan you have, the preliminary plan, is for a six-lot subdivision, which is comprised of the commercial property where Something Natural is currently operating their business, combined with the residential property at number fifty-two Cliff Road, which is where Matt and Sheila live. So the, between the two properties, we're showing a six-lot subdivision with a forty-foot right-of-way and, you know, sewer and water and drainage in a schematic fashion appropriate for the preliminary plan. And we're just seeking comments from the board regarding this matter.
Board members? Board?
I'm a little freaked out by the plan. I know every piece of property up on the cliff is being subdivided, including the one we sold, and Highland, and DeRochers property, Pope's property. I mean, it's, it's, it's out of control, but... Is this being done now to stave off something, a zoning change or something?
No, it's, more than anything, it's, they're trying to figure out, as, as Matt would say, "I'm not getting any younger," and I'm trying to just figure out my exit strategy. So I don't know that you're going to see a definitive plan, follow this up. I have no direction to do that. It's just a estate planning tool, basically.
Now, the wa, the road is forty feet wide. I'm having a problem with the forty-foot width as opposed to a thirty-foot width or something else. I'm having a real problem with forty-foot wide. There's not a, none of those little streets are forty feet wide up there across the street from it. I don't know what happened to them.
Hold on.
Cabot, not forty? Highland, Moors End? Something happened up there.
Staff may have a little disagreement with you, and I might, too.
But I'm, I'm having a problem with the forty-foot wide, and especially abutting the wetlands right to the southwest, southeast.
Well, we're not proposing...
I know you're not proposing to cut it that wide, but I'm having problems with the layout that wide up there. I'm having an issue, because it looks like, by the way you've laid it out, that garage, or whatever that is in the back of their house, becomes completely non-conforming as to setback.
Well, the garage is going to go away. I'm, I'm only showing existing structures.
Okay. And you've got wetlands delineation in here? I see some.
Not at this time. It's, it's, it's getting the card before the horse. We're, we're just trying to tackle one issue at a time.
And you're doing a small hammerhead?
Yes.
On a personal level, I have an issue with it, but on a planning board level, I suppose, it's going to meet all the requirements. It's on water and sewer. I know, it's just a freeze plan. I'm just having trouble with the forty-foot width up there.
Board members, anyone else?
Why not? By the letter of the law.
Yeah, I, go ahead, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say that I think the advantage of the wider layout here is you're able to do some more natural-type vegetation, abutting the park land on the, on the one side. So, and, and that's what has been shown in here preliminary, right, Jeff?
Yes.
It looks like sway, you'd be able to do maybe a more natural swale-type situation instead of the leach pits. And I would assume that, even though, and again, I know it's early in this stage, but the, the existing driveway on lot one, that would need to be relocated, so it comes directly off the subdivision road?
Yep.
And then, I guess the assumption is the existing structures would pretty much, except for the existing house, would all be relocated or repositioned.
That's correct.
And it's, I got, you know, I, oh, I understand the comments of Ms. Williams about change and everything. This is a zoning district that allows this. Looks to me like each lot meets the minimum. Is that right?
Yes. This is, we've, we're showing you, you know, fully conforming, including the forty-foot right-of-way and all of, everything is conforming, is dimensionally.
Right.
Some reasons that they do not look good this way. They're not long, and they have not worked out well, quite different from an aesthetic standard. They have not looked that long. And that's a lot of money, and it's terrible. So I'm just coming at it from a multi-pronged direction.
No, I, I think I'm respectfully disagreeing with some of the staff on this one at this point. I mean, unless there's any thought about, I mean, six lots, twelve, twelve potential houses up there at this point, you know, that's going to generate a little bit of traffic there as well, too, so... Is there anything, any thoughts about either restricting the number of lots or restricting dwellings on the lots?
We haven't discussed it, but we can certainly do so.
Okay, I mean, because that, that, that may, that may consider into the roadway.
I'd be happy with that, James.
You know, but I, I think that's something that needs to be looked at, from that perspective.
And, Mr. Chairman, we...
Yes, sir.
This is our, the, the ROH zoning district, so we would, I think, expect brick sidewalks, possibly a different type of surface. I mean, this, the road surface, we might look at different alternatives for that.
Yep.
The, you know, in neighborhoods like this, we would look for opportunities maybe for off-street parking on, on the shoulder, so this might, might actually want a variable width-type roadway and get rid of lot eight completely, the unbuildable lot on the other side. Those type of issues, I think, would come out at the definitive, those kind of detailing issues would come out, but...
Yep.
And probably a payment in lieu of, I'm sure bike path isn't going to be needed here, so...
Go ahead, then. Did you have something?
I just think we've been having a discussion that this sort of falls under recently, and this overlooks the Lily Pond and all that stuff down there, which I think is one of the views and, and whatever that should be protected in some way before it becomes invisible to people and the rest of the stuff. So I think that if you, if there's any possibility to restrict the number of second dwellings, I certainly think it's a good idea. Are they going to maintain the commercial part of it?
No.
This is just a preliminary plan.
Preliminary plan, so...
That would have to go away. If they're going to do this, it would have to go away.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I couldn't figure that out, so...
Yeah.
Everything, all commercial, this would have to stop, because the parking covers ninety percent of that.
But does that not seem like a terribly wide driveway, street, or whatever you call it, to go in just around, or...
They're just using the standards, the forty-foot layout. It don't have to be in the final.
It wouldn't have to be in the final, okay.
They're just showing what they can do under controlling...
Right.
With the subdivision control laws.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Go ahead.
Can we, do we have the right to reduce the number of lots using this road? So the lots become a little bit more...
I would caution...
Better configured, but we can't go there, or can we?
Well...
People always ask for the maximum amount they can subdivide.
I know, but...
You need to establish a rational nexus for those kind of requests...
Right.
Which are based on typically waivers from our requirements, so you just can't randomly...
Reduce it, right.
We have a zoning bylaw that sets up minimums, and it's really not up to the board to start randomly inserting their own preferences unless those are connected to requests for waivers or other things that are submitted by the applicant.
Right.
So I would caution you that, you know, a rational nexus needs to be established if that's where you're headed.
I, I think that's probably something best reserved when we get to definitive, but a preliminary plan, I, I think, as Nat has said as well, too, I mean, this is, this is the direction it really should head into, right, just for safe discussion.
Because I have a line of sight issue also on that corner with that more, well, there's a, there's already chaos up there coming out of Something Natural, so...
There'd be less chaos with houses.
Yeah.
I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Unless they have a sandwich shop.
Yeah, kind of. Then it's like, oh, my.
Pretty simple to figure that out. Pretty simple to figure that out.
All right, so this is a preliminary plan.
Yes, it is.
It's not an MRD.
Is there, is there anything else to give the applicant some guidance here? Anything else? No? No? Mr. Blackwell, do you think you have enough from us?
Certainly, Andrew said about Lot 8. Did you say something?
He's got that.
Sir?
I think what Andrew was referring to is just incorporating Lot 8 into the road system and having, you know, more than a 40-foot perhaps, but for the reason of landscaping and parking.
I would think I see a lot of cars there.
All set, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, we would typically write up some sort of a, and so, if the board would authorize the chair to sign that, or we'll bring it to the August meeting, or whatever you'd like.
Would you like to make a motion?
Go ahead, I'm not.
Thank you. Make a motion to the effect to authorize staff drop a letter discussing the details of what we don't, preliminary plan to be signed by the chair.
I don't understand what he's asking. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second to that? I'll second for discussion. Is there any discussion at this point? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Let the record reflect, that's a three-to-a-vote, and this one is sustaining. Okay, next thing before us is 7713, which is Tom H.C. Giffen Trustee Somerset Nominee Trust, 14 Somerset Road. Mr. Santos, good evening.
Yes, thank you. For the applicant, Tom Giffen, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors. What we have before you is a preliminary subdivision plan for Tom's property located on Somerset Road. Earlier tonight, the board voted to endorse an A&R plan, which created a parcel around Tom's existing dwelling. This plan sets forth four additional lots, which would be serviced by a 40-foot-wide new subdivision road off of Somerset Road, Somerset Lane. The subdivision itself is located in the R-20 zoning district. It is also located within the public wellhead recharge. It is serviced by Town Water, and there is Town Sewer available to the project also. Currently...
Is it Somerset Road?
It's Somerset Road.
Somerset Road.
Yes.
The other one's lane.
Somerset Road.
Yeah, this is road.
So, we're going down at the end of Friendship and drive straight through.
Correct.
Right, correct. So, what we're proposing is a 40-foot-wide layout with a 20-foot-wide gravel road, essentially under the rural road alternative. That is the essential proposal with four new lots off of the subdivided road, the front lot being an A&R plan off of the existing Somerset Road. I will bring up that, you know, we are adjacent Hayawas, there, or Hayawasie, or whatever, lane off of Cato, has a similar layout. That one, though, however, is paved, and I do bring that up for just kind of a point of reference. We do have a wetland located at the very end of the property. That does have some effect on the end of the roadway. We are proposing a hammerhead turnaround at the end. Tom is in a position here where he's trying to do some estate planning and come up with a scheme here for subdividing this particular piece of property. Three of the lots would be on the northerly side of the road, one of the lots would be on the southerly side. Essentially, the area is encompassed by a lot of the land that's currently, Tom's granddaughter owns one lot, Mary Ann owns a couple of lots, and then Jim owns some lots out in the back area. So, this was all land that was essentially owned by Tom over the years, and it's been subdivided and parceled out to the kids over the years. So, that's the application. It is a preliminary plan for your review. I think the biggest things would be maybe the discussion of the 20-foot gravel versus a paved scenario, and, you know, what that may entail. We do need the 40-foot layout because we're in the public wellhead recharge, I do have to meet the mass stormwater quality standards. We're also in a mapped Zone 2 DEP area, so I do need area for some grass swales and some work within the right-of-way, so that's why we're proposing the 40-foot layout. Again, the road itself would be underground telephone, electric cable, and an extension of the sewer, and an extension of the water main into the site. Ian, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, go ahead.
20-foot-wide gravel?
That's your standard.
I know. I'm not going there.
So, if you're asking for 20-foot pavement, now that's what I'm, I don't know what you're asking me. You're asking me is it 20-foot wide?
I'm not going 20 feet on anything that's small. That is wider, twice as wide as Somerset Road.
Yeah.
So, we just did 16 off of Fairgrounds. So, I think you should look at that.
Oh, no, that's fine. I mean, what I've submitted here is what the regulations require. I mean, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
You know, my biggest thing would be, I think more so, I'm more than happy to reduce the width, it's the question of whether you're comfortable with the gravel, or whether you want to see paving. I don't know what the scenario, what the story was behind the subdivision off Cato, how that one ended up paved, but that one is paved.
And that's off the dirt part, I think, isn't it?
Because it was paved. Cato's paved.
Because Cato was paved, yeah. So, okay.
Is this, is this coming off, the pavement ends right about here?
Yeah, the pavement ends north of Tom's house, by those catch basins. Yeah, this doesn't, the paving doesn't come down as far.
I didn't think so.
No.
So, I don't know if, I'm not enthusiastic about, how many, how many feet is this of gravel? Gravel is loud, it doesn't stay where it's supposed to stay. It's a pain in the butt.
It's about a 400-foot long.
That's a pain in the butt.
You know.
I mean, are we talking stabilized gravel? Are we just talking, I'm just throwing loose inch gravel in there?
Well, no, stabilized gravel is per your rural road that, that, that's in the, you know, the detail in the subdivision regs, but.
I know.
As I said, I mean, if you think a reduced width, not 20-foot paved way, I mean, I think that's, that's a, you know.
I'm not looking for paving here.
But you're coming on to, you're coming on to, you know, to the gravel of Somerset. Now, I know there's been some talk over layout revisions on Somerset, because I worked on that area with Andrew. So, I mean, whether that's going to occur on the Barrett side, whether it may occur on this side, you know, between the cemetery and the Giffen properties, and Stanton property, and so forth, I mean, there has been talk about, you know, some right-of-way alterations within the Somerset Road layout.
It's very narrow, it's a deliberate disaster to keep people off of it, but it's not working very well.
Yeah.
So, you know, when you move beyond where this is coming into Somerset, it needs to be cut back. It's dangerous. Even if they don't want to pave it, and they don't want to grade it, the growth on both sides of Somerset going towards Friendship is impossible this year.
Yeah.
So, we're looking at like Lover's Lane, where it's starting to move in on you, and you have to drive into people's driveways to get past somebody. So, I'm, I don't know what the solution is here, I don't know what we'd make them required to do, since a lot of people do come the other direction on Somerset Lane, whether they can get through it or not, and get lost in a pothole or not. But I'm, I'm having difficulty with gravel and 20 feet, so that's just where I'm coming from.
Is it the gravel and the 20-foot width, or just gravel in general?
Gravel in general.
Okay. That's fine.
It's a, it's a pretty quiet rural setting.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're driving down 400 feet of gravel...
Yeah.
Seriously. I don't know what your other options are.
Well, I think we pave to a narrower width. You know, I don't know, Tom's frontage right now...
He's done the paving. I'd like to see the whole range.
Tom's lot, Tom's lot has 223 feet of frontage, and the paving is probably maybe 50 feet north of that. So, you'd be looking at, you know, potentially paving in front of Tom's lot and then into the subdivision. But that's not going to help you coming from Friendship, but at least it's going to get you...
Frankly, I think there are bigger issues than this subdivision involved with the rest of that road.
Yes, agreed.
So, all right, yeah, hang on for a second.
Which I think are being, you know, they're being looked at.
As far as how it's being subdivided, I'm fine with that. It's just some of these little details.
Ms. McGlaughlin had a question, if you're all set. Please.
I had a question to Mr. Santos.
Yeah.
Looking at the plan, it's very hard to see, but I can see it. It says the number of lots is five and available four.
Yeah.
And I count, his house is Lot 1.
Again, it's, I'm including, I'm saying it's Lot 1, John, but it's really, it's an A&R that's already, that's essentially an approval-not-required plan. So, that lot will be endorsed as an A&R, it's not part of the subdivision. But I'm just showing you the entire picture here. So, that would be Lot 1. You'd have four new lots, and the roadway is essential, would be, is considered a lot, too.
Six.
That, yes, yeah.
And this other paper wouldn't say six?
Yeah.
Four building.
One, two, three, four. It's essentially four building with one roadway lot, and the lot around Tom's house is an A&R, so it's, but it's...
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I've got a few things for you. Lot 1, I would hope that if we do this, will take its driveway off the access off the new road? Do you have just something to thank?
Well, oh, you mean change the access? No, the access to, it would be off of where he now uses it, that lot wouldn't change. That's where his garage is on that north side?
Okay, I'm just, again, just kind of with an eye toward things at this point, see if we could get it off the subdivision roadway.
I think he means the front, the newer part, not what the existing stuff is. No new cuts into Somerset.
Oh, correct, oh.
Yeah, but I'm even saying with the pre-existing house at this point, is there not, would there be an opportunity to move that roadway into the internal?
I'd say, based on where his garage is, no.
Yeah, okay, I just, I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking at this point. But I think what I want to do is, I'm not ready to give up on 20 yet, but I'd really like to defer to staff, because I think the key issue I see here is really Somerset Road itself.
Yes.
And that, I think, is probably where I'd like to focus on, if anything, and then we can talk about the internal roadway a little bit later, but, so, let me turn it over to Andrew and Leslie, because I'd really like to hear their thoughts on this. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's exactly what Leslie and I had briefly thought, is that, you know, the internal, waiving the standard for the internal roadway would be preferable and requiring more on Somerset Road to make sure there's adequate, you know, fire safety access. I think particularly the corner with the new roadway lot and over Lot 1, you can see there's a very clear pinch point there that, you know, if that could be addressed, I know that that lot is now separately defined through the A&R, but again, it's the same person basically controlling it. So, I think that would be something that you'd want to look at.
Yeah, and I've actually got 31,000 on Tom's front lot, whereas I only need 20. I mean, so I think there's an opportunity there to take the street line maybe on our side as opposed to the Barrett side, and the, that other side where that private way is.
And even if it stayed in easement somehow?
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
That would, I think, you know, provide a little more room there over what's existing.
Oh.
I do think that the pavement on Somerset should be extended southerly, at least to the entrance to this, and that should include at minimum a driveway-type, or roadway-type apron, which could then transition to something else.
Okay.
In terms of possible, it looks to me, Paul, if you could just confirm, that the roadway lot goes into a wetland area, so there's no extension possibility of that road further?
That's correct. There is no extension possibility, yeah.
So, it extending to the edge of the wetland, is that just, is there any reason that it extends through you, Mr. Chairman, to the wetland, or is that just how you?
Well, that's why I need to gain my frontage, because I could extend that road right up to the property line. Unfortunately, I have the wetland lines at the property line.
I got you.
And I have a 25-foot no disturbs through the wetland regulations, and a 50-foot, so whereas I need that line for my frontage, I don't necessarily, would run into problems with conservation on extending the road all the way to the end property line.
Gotcha. The other thing is that, you know, when these are laid out, if other lots have potential subdivision opportunity, and there's an oversized lot to the south, is that, are you intending to provide frontage for that lot through this division?
This is all family right now, so there'd be no intent to restrict access, you know?
Yeah.
Well, it's something that the board should think about in terms of sizing the road appropriately in either allowing for further review if there's going to be additional lots added.
There won't be 20 years from now, there will be 15.
Right, and that's, we need to look that far ahead.
But that's why we've got to look at Somerset Road final, what are we doing with that road? I mean, that road is horrifying.
Well, as Paul mentioned, he's done a very extensive right-of-way analysis on how to potentially widen that.
Should be 20 feet traveled away, period.
So...
Andrew, I don't want you to drift off the top of it, where you're heading with the internal lots, so can you just kind of refocus back on, for him?
Well, again, I think that if there's opportunities to re-subdivide, you need to make sure to work that condition in.
Okay.
That's part of your rules and regulations when you're considering a subdivision, to look at subdivision potential of surrounding lots and coordinating those ways, so.
Correct.
It's just something to think about at this point, if that's, if that's a possibility in the future.
Is Somerset Road a town?
It's county. No, it's county.
County? Well, are we down to Friendship?
No, there's two separate sections of it.
Uh-huh.
So, we've got a, we've got another gun in the road situation here.
The town owns, somebody owns all the way to Friendship?
I believe it's a private way beyond the pavement.
It's a private, with a county, it's a county layout, oh, yeah, that's right. Coming from the pavement down towards Friendship, it's a county layout, but it's private. It was never, all right? And then from the pavement above, it was taken, to the edge of the pavement was taken as a public way.
Right. From the 1975 taking...
We didn't make it complete taking.
Because of the amendment that said only where paved, where the road was paved, it covered just that one section. So, the unpaved section remains private.
So, just a Robert's Lane, that's it.
It's paved down to just about driveway, and then it's dirt the rest of the way down to Friendship.
Yes.
Right. But the, let's see, the taking ends where the pavement ends in 1975.
Right.
Yeah.
If you want to call it paved, as you know, that last little piece there is not well paved.
And that was scabbed on afterwards, I think, actually. That was put on afterwards.
Yeah. All right. So, is there anything else?
Well, this is going to be an interesting, I mean, this opens up the discussion, Paul, about the road.
Mm-hmm.
But now that Andrew's explaining it with you, this is, this is going to be complicated, but at least now that they're exercising their rights on their own property, the opposition to improving that road and maybe getting the legal work done, Andrew, to get it to be public, and finally happen.
Mm-hmm.
And Friendship Line won't be a swimming pool. And the drainage can get fixed.
Well...
That's why it is, because all the sand goes down to them catch basins.
Yeah.
But it's true, though. So, talk about scour.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I mean, I would be, I would look at this roadway as a 16-foot traveled way of some kind, whatever it ends up being.
Mm-hmm.
Because of that future potential there, of the other side being able to get frontage. This is, you know, this is going to be what we're going to be seeing, Andrew. This happened on the other end of Cato.
Yeah.
Cato's never coming through. This is it, right here.
Yeah.
This is the school relief valve, sort of, in some degree.
Yeah, and I think when, actually, we looked at it with, on the Somerset section, as I said, Andrew and I have done extensive, see the problem, is you've got the pole line on essentially the Giffen side of the road, and that's where the bigger cut is.
It's a very high, very deep road.
Yeah, it's, and the high side is the cemetery.
That's right.
The Giffen property, and the low side is the Barrett property. The problem is, then you're taking the right-of-way over onto the Barrett side, which presents , I mean, so.
Sounds like Eel Point Road.
Yeah.
Staff, is there anything else, Andrew?
And, Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, sewer, you're showing a sewer line, is that right?
Correct.
So, this is, is it gravity, or is there a pump station involved?
Well, right now, I think there may be pump, right now, the, there's a private line essentially that goes in front of Tom's lot, Tom's granddaughter, Denise, and then Mary Ann's lot, but again, that's a private, it's all pumped right now up to where the catch basins are, where the pavement ends is where the sewer line is, actually, so whether I can get up there gravity or not, yeah, we haven't looked at, but.
Okay. So, there, Mr. Chairman, again, through you, so there might need to be some sort of sewer upgrade here.
Well, I've definitely got to extend the sewer in Somerset to get to the site.
To get to this.
Because right now, it's a private forest main that runs across all the Giffen properties.
Gotcha.
And goes back up into the town layout, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The water is definitely out there, there's full, there's a full, you know, eight-inch water main in Somerset Road, you know, so there's water, there's hydrant, that's, that's not an issue.
Do you have anything else from the board? Nope. Well, great.
We need to do the letter.
Mr. Stewart, well, let me just check with Mr. Santos to see if he's got a clear direction with this, or a good sense of where we're trying to head with this.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I think we're, Andrew and I have been looking at Somerset anyway, and I think it kind of brings it to the forefront now on, you know, and I understand where Tom's, you know, Tom's intent here is to do some estate planning and move forward, but at some
Sure.
But at some, at some point, someone's going to want to try to build this thing.
Right, I agree, and that's something we have to look at, too, is, you know, the potential, once that roadway's in, for, you know, additionally, A&R to start happening.
Yeah, yeah. And as I said, right now, there is no potential to the, to the east...
Yep.
But there is obviously, you know, everything from the, from five westerly is, you know, like I said, it's all controlled by the, some entity of the Giffen family that potentially could do something there.
Sure. And we've seen, fortunately, we've seen that happen before.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes.
I'm hoping to have the chairman, have the staff drop the letter, and the chairman sign it in the office.
Okay, do I hear a second to that?
Second.
The motion is to have staff drop a draft letter to the applicant just to talk about
the things, to bring up the things we've discussed. That's to be signed by the chairman in the office. Okay, sir? All right, so that motion's made in second. There's no further discussion, I take it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm told there's a sketch plan, which is Easy IA Squash and Fitness. Yeah, I'd say, all right.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Izaya Truman, and I was interested in creating a small squash and fitness club on the island. I've been here about fifteen years and have been looking at something like this for quite some time, and I identified a property at Seven Primrose, which is off of Eel Point, and I was curious to see if there was a possibility of doing something there. Essentially, this would be a very small, private club that would be centered towards the center of the property. It would be very limited, geared towards summer residence, and because of my personal background and interests, we would be very much supporting and donating time, services, and facilities to the high school students during the winter months and year-round residents. So, I haven't really pursued it too far, but I was interested in just gaining your feedback and comments before going any further.
Board members?
Oh, yeah. Do you have any questions?
I don't, did you bring any maps or anything?
I have just a, a GIS map of the property itself.
Uh-huh.
How big is the property?
Property is two acres, and there's an adjacent property that's also two acres.
Can you bring that down?
Sure.
Thanks.
Just some advice. MEPA has absolute control over every one of those lots out there as to what you can and cannot clear. So, you may not be able to do what you think you need to do with the parking, and on top of that, Primrose is a private road.
Yeah.
And on top of that, it's a residential zone with absolutely no commercial whatsoever all the way along that entire straight length of Dionis Eel Point Road, certainly not on Primrose. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie, private nonprofit clubs are allowed anywhere by special permit now?
Yes.
Is this going to be a private 501(c)(3)?
It would be profit, private, but it wouldn't be a nonprofit, if that what you mean by...
Where does that take him?
I've gone over the proposal with him, and we have two different uses. We have a recreational facility and a club. His would fall into the recreational facility definition, which is allowed in all zoning districts by special permit, and that's how the Westmore Club was permitted as well.
Knowing Primrose Lane, because I've had to go up there multiple times for HDC houses, HDC stuff, I don't know if there's, I know how deep the squash courts have to be. I don't know if there's any way from an HDC point of view to approve a commercial structure in the middle of a residential zone, forget all the zoning issues, just from architectural review from the Historic District Commission. I think that's one of your biggest hurdles. Putting a commercial enterprise in the middle of a strictly residential zone, I don't think is the best, is your best bet. You know, you'd be better off looking to see if there's something at Richmond Properties off of Old South Road or on Nobody or Farm Road or, Andrew, what, Bunker Road, whatever that, South Valley Road, South Road, whatever that is off of, going towards the VFW back in there. There are pieces that would be more accessible to the public, not on a private road, and with a little bit more of a commercial bent around them than in the middle of Primrose Lane, which I'm having a terrible trouble with. And I think if you were to notice the neighbors within three hundred feet, never going to happen. You'd be appealed and appealed and appealed to keep it out of there. So, while I appreciate that you found enough space, I think that's absolutely the wrong place to put it, and I think you've got some other options that maybe Andrew and Leslie know about in Mid-Island.
Yeah.
About the old waste options thing over there, the fitness club crossing the U.S., still sitting there. It's been purchased there.
It has?
They're working on it.
Oh, goody. What about, what are we doing with the, oh, one more question along his line?
All right, but we're not here to problem solve.
Right.
Other places for this, we're here to give them feedback on Seven Primrose.
But I'm just asking if there's restrictions on Miles Rees's pit, or is that still commercial?
On Surfside?
Yeah.
Part of it's residential and part of it's in the commercial neighborhood.
That's all going to be, you know, developed, redeveloped.
But to, to get back on the train and get back on the rails here, I think Primrose Lane is not something I'd be amenable to. I think it's a great idea, but I wouldn't be amenable to it there.
I did look at the lot near the VFW there and through the Valero project, which just didn't seem to make sense. For me, I was really trying to find something large enough that was also private, which means it can't be right in and around town. It just didn't seem like there's anything available, so that was about the closest reasonable lot that I, that I could discover at this point.
I think Nobody or Farm Road may have some options.
Okay. But I think Linda's indicating to you, the best thing for you to do, if you already have it, is start talking to your neighbors out there and just see what their basic thoughts are. I think if you're going to tote anything about how it's going to interact with the school, we've heard that dozens of times before.
Doesn't work there.
But you're going to need to get a letter from the appropriate recreational person at the school to say they are in support of having those kind of programs available.
Great.
Because it really boils down to a hearsay issue until something like that happens, so I'd just give you that little heads up as well, too, no matter where you're going to wind up going.
Sure.
And Barry, I think endangered species guys have been all over that neighborhood, and they've, up on Bishop's Rise, which is one over, they have restricted those lots to very small building envelopes and huge no disturb buffers, and this is in the endangered species critical area. So, I think that is probably going to squish this to the point of where you can't do it anyway because you're required to have so much parking. So, I think there's a lot of drawbacks to this, and that Primrose Lane is very narrow and steep, so I don't think that's probably the best place to go. I understand what you're looking for, but that's probably not it.
Okay.
Anything else to come, staff? If you guys would like to have...
I appreciate the board's comments about this specific site, which there is a kind of a high bar when recreational uses are being placed in residential zones, but I think the board does need to understand there are purely residentially zoned areas where such a facility would be appropriate.
Probably.
Yeah, so, I think that, you know, generally...
Fairgrounds Road somewhere?
Well, let him finish first of all.
Well, there's, you know, we can, we can talk about some specific sites, but I think that, again, it's, it's a matter of the neighborhood, the access, all the issues that you brought up, but I think that, you know, just remember that recreational facilities are encouraged, they're, you know, they're certainly, the Westmore Club, you know, was, is a positive addition to that neighborhood. The neighborhood's sort of building up around it now.
Right.
It was already there.
So, there's probably some decent sites out there. I do see what the board is saying about this particular one. I think it's just very challenging.
Yeah.
So, I think the site selection probably needs to continue.
Crooked Lane, even, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming before us. I appreciate the effort to do that.
No problem.
Okay. Do you want your map? Yes, do you want the map back? I'm so sorry.
Give me your map back.